We saved an email. We're all together, we're interactive, we're stuck. Yeah. Do I need to send you some photos?
Get our council up here with the star. They have such, uh, constipation. Look at this. And they're not even mad at us. You can just put it there. Played on the taking wrong money in Indiana.
You've got some Polish words or phrases.
Well, you kind of gave them the message. She's coming. She's ju- nevermind.
Don't.
Hold ya.
That would be good, though. There you go. Behind the dials, we should start a website. Behind the, yeah. Behind the dials.
All right. Call the meeting to order. Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Pastor Taylor here?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, there you are in the crowd. Okay. Pastor Taylor is from the First Baptist Church of Fountain Hills. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, and just on behalf of our pastor and our church, just considered a great honor to be in the rotation. We sincerely appreciate it. Also, just since I have all of you in front of me in this brief moment, on behalf of the Fountain Hills Disc Golf Club and our 100 members, just want to thank you for your support and just all the great improvements to the course and all of those things. Working with the town staff has just been amazing with Mark and Dawn and all those people. So Fountain Hills is a great place to live.
Thank you.
And I'm thankful for that.
Thank you for saying.
Amen. All right. Let us pray. Hey Dad, we just come before you. And we're just here with a spirit of thankfulness, Father, that you care so deeply about this town. You care so deeply about its people and the issues that are before this governing body tonight. Thank you so much for just loving us the way that you do. We ask for a spirit of discernment, a spirit of unity in all the issues before us tonight. Thank you for this great council and this staff and just this town. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Vats.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Vice Mayor Yates?
He- President.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Oki?
Here.
And Councilmember Lachey?
Okay, I'd first like to announce that if you have our agenda, the consent agenda items seven and nine have been moved to the regular agenda at the request of Councilmember Dickey. Now, I'm going to read a proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2014 marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, now therefore I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2014, to be Constitution Week in Fountain Hills and hereby ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. Thank you. Okay. Just have one, we're gonna do one presentation as part of my report. I'm gonna, since we have so much that we're doing tonight, I'm going to save the rest of that for the next meeting. Pet-friendly town. I know that a lot of you out there have pets. This is our new pet-friendly logo that designates Fountain Hills as a pet-friendly community. I do want to first thank our resident, Andy Bell, for coming up with the suggestion initially and contacting me with her idea. I also want to thank Councilwoman Cassie Hansen for helping Andy with the list along with Lena Belliner. The logo that you see there was created by our own Ken Valverde. He's a member of our town staff. And I also want to express my thanks to Ken and the community services staff and Mike Chikarone, our tech guru, for making this all happen and all happen so quickly. This government doesn't drag its feet. The logo is located on the homepage of the town website. You click on the logo and, okay? You click on the logo to read about our many pet amenities. There's a lot more than that's here. It's just kind of a little summary of some of them. It's an exciting designation for a town. It can be used as a marketing tool for prospective residents as well as great for our visitors. Community Services Department is currently doing a mailing to all the businesses in town that are designated as pet-friendly, like some of our restaurants and hotels and stores that sell pet products. The letter will introduce them to our new website edition and it will contain a special logo decal. Yeah, I can't really see it, but that's the decal. And they'll be able to put this in their store window. Any other stores that allow pets can also be designated pet-friendly and can request a logo decal. We always say that Fountain Hills is a great place to live. It's now officially a great place for your pet to call home. We're very excited about this. And now we have a presentation by former mayor Sharon Morgan, president and director of the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Corporation for the town's newest sister city, Zamosz Poland. Sharon, wanna come up?
Thank you, Mayor. It is my pleasure and honor to make my fourth trip before you and some of your predecessors to officially turn over the documents for our fourth sister city, Zamosz Poland. It was a great trip. It was... For bad backs and people over 70, it was a little dangerous. The cobblestones and the salt mines, which you... Excuse me, you took the elevator halfway down, then you toured for three hours on cobblestone and went another 440 steps down. Not for the faint of heart or... But all in all, it was great. The people, the country is beautiful. The people were great. And as much as I love Fountain Hills, I see more trash in the park, on the streets, in one day than I did in eight days of Poland. You could eat, if you wanted to, off the cobblestone grounds in the big cities or wherever. Not one piece of trash did I see. That amazed me for a town in Europe because all the big cities cannot carry that claim. What I'm gonna do first before I call Mayor Linda down is I'm gonna show you a few pictures of Poland, I think. All right. Remember I said "I think"?
While they're getting that on, I just want to recognize some of the dignitaries that have joined us today. Sheriff Joe Arpaio is here. Of course, Consul Borgronel Horsham is here. Consul Rick Melendez is here. State Representative John Kavanaugh is here. Mayor Jerry Miles here. And of course Sharon Morgan, also Mayor Fountain Hills.
Okay.
There are some other dignitaries here, but Consul Horsham will be introducing them.
Okay. This is in Warsaw. That was on our walking tour there. This one is a picture in Krakow, which, in all honesty, I think turned out to be our favorite other than our new sister city. Best shop in there we could find. Okay. We had the honor of visiting the American consulate in Krakow. And this is, Andrew Caruso took our questions and basically talked to us about all the things and his career in politics, if you will, how he got started and has kept at it and traveled the world with it and loves it in Poland. Now, you see the beautiful chandeliers. They look like crystal, don't they? Those are all salt. That was just one of the fantastic sights down there. I mean, you had pictures, you had statues. Everything, everything was out of salt. And just one little tidbit that came out of that, when they worked the salt mines there, the horses that they took down, they were down there for 25 years and they couldn't bring them out because they were blind after being down there for 25 years in the dark, in the salt mine. So many, so many years. But they had been there for 25 years, so they were probably pretty well-used for working every day for 25 years without a break. But it was very, very interesting. And like I say, you would think, if you were there, that those were crystals. And they were, salt crystals. But it was very interesting. This is the town hall in Zamosz. That is the first thing that we saw there. And I don't know if we can, you can tell it, but the flag on, well, my left as I'm looking at it, is the United States flag. First time the United States flag had ever flown over their town hall. And that was there to greet us when we drove in. This is the town square in Zamosz. And trust me, it looked like that all the time. If you look at the ground, you don't see a piece of paper, you don't see a cigarette, but you don't see one piece of trash. This was the signing ceremony and with Mayor Linda Kavanaugh and President, their mayor is called President. So it's President Zamoiski. No, Linda, you're not the President.
Sounds good to me.
I saw that look, I saw that look in your eye when we said that.
I'll have to move to Poland.
Well, now you could handle, you might handle it there, but I don't think you'd get that fly here. And the next thing is I presented on behalf of Sister Cities the Arizona necktie to the President. It was a silver bolo with turquoise and amethyst. And just as a note, all the gentlemen in our party that were there, I had asked them, and they all did, they all had bolo ties on instead of regular neckties that day. So I was proud of them for that. All in all, it was a great trip. Like I say, we look forward to them coming to visit us. One of the programs that they presented for us one night was music. They have a college of music, which is the kids all through high school. It's just music. They put on a concert. Unbelievable. The last number was all we could do to sit in our seats because it was rock around the clock. The first half of the program was classical, then they went to jazz and rock and roll. And I mean, you were sitting there because these kids were good. It's no, no music in front of them, all by memory. There was piano solos, there was vocal. If you closed your eyes, the lone young man that sang, you would have thought you were in Carnegie Hall. It was unbelievable. Hopefully, we will be able to do... One of the exchanges I'm hoping for and pushing for is a music exchange between our, our kids and theirs, among other things. But that is one thing that I'm going to push for, is a music exchange. But we'll see if that comes about. Other than that, one last thing before I ask Linda to come down. One more time, I'm going to say it. And most of you have heard me say this before. Because we have some doubting Thomases and some naysayers in town, anybody that has gone on any of the Sister City trips has paid every cent out of their own pocket. Not one dime has come out of the treasury of the town of Fountain Hills for any of these trips. I've said it every time I've been up here and I will continue to say it. Whether I get everybody to believe me or not, that's another story. But it is the truth. We can all show you the checks and the credit card receipts that will prove that we paid for our trips. And I've been fortunate to go to all of our sister cities, some of them more than once. It's a fantastic experience. President, the late President Eisenhower knew what he was doing. And God knows, in today's world, we could use a little more people-to-people instead of country-to-country. Linda, would you come down for some presentations?
Before we do that, I have the Consul Horsham wants to come up and just introduce some of the people that he has here.
Okay.
We'll do that. Nick, you wanna come up? Sorry. Elizabeth? Elizabeth, you gonna join him up there? Okay?
Thank you very much, Mayor Linda Kavanaugh. Thank you very much, Mayor Sharon Morgan, for the beautiful speech about the Zamosz.
I'm not done yet, there.
Oh, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bogumiunek Horsham. I am the Honorable Consul of Poland in Arizona. Now I'd like to introduce Honorable Consul of El Salvador Enrique Melendez. And John Kavanaugh, state official. Members of city council, Sister City Committee, Mayor Sharon Morgan and Mayor Jerry Miles. I'd like to introduce Father Jacek Wyszewski from our Polish church. President of Polish American Congress, Eva Grabowski. Her husband and kid. Polish Highlanders, Jacek Jan Gacek. Janusz Yajimek for Polish event. And Paweł Lach. That's the gentleman on the travel bureau and he organized trip to Poland. This is my great honor and privilege to present to you Polish flag as a sign of friendship and cooperation between city Zamosz, Poland and town of Fountain Hills, Arizona. United States and Poland have a long history of friendship and cooperation and we would like to continue and cultivate. Thank you very much.
Few minutes ago, I had been asked to say a few words about Poland and Zamosz. Poland, lovely, beautiful country. Motherhood of Nicholas Copernicus, Chopin, Marie Curie Sklodowsky. She was the first woman who received Nobel Prize ever. And of course, Kościusz Kopulaski. Recently, like Valencia and Pope John Paul II, our saint. They used to... They used to call Ronald Reagan and our Pope, John Paul II, Holy Coalition, who contributed to the end of communism. And of course, Zamosz, my hometown. Lovely city, built in 15th century and have population of 60,000. Have musical academy, like Mayor mentioned. And high schools, universities, and beautiful park. Maybe not as beautiful, maybe as beautiful as our park in Fountain Hills. And we did receive a royal welcome in Zamosz with, starting with flag, American flag. Our state official, John Kavanaugh, have a pleasure of firing a cannon. So he received diploma. He can officially use the cannon in all the European Union countries. And I would like for you to know that Fountain Hills representatives, they were wonderful. We are so happy to have such a sister city representatives, of course, mayors, to represent Fountain Hills and United States. And President of the city of Zamosz and officials, they are very honored to have Fountain Hills as a sister city. They have few other sister cities, but we are the first city in United States. So thank you so much for supporting this. And Mayor, please.
Okay, Linda. Come on. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. No, they don't need to do that. Not yet. Okay, on behalf of Sister Cities International in Washington, D.C., this is the official thing from Washington, D.C., Sister Cities International. Sister Cities International in recognition of the sister city relationship between Fountain Hills, Arizona and Zamosz, Poland, established June 28th, 2014. Hereby acknowledge and commends both communities for their commitment to citizen diplomacy and efforts to establish a partnership which promotes peace and prosperity through people-to-person exchanges. And it's signed by Mary Kane, President and CEO of Sister Cities International. Then we have what both you and President Zamoiski signed. Now you can find someplace for all this stuff here. Because last time, they told me they had to go out and buy another case and they didn't have any more space. So...
Can we have to go out and buy another case?
Hi, Ken.
Take it out of the council.
Okay. So that is the actual proclamation that was signed by Linda, Mayor Linda and the President Zamoiski. Am I pronouncing that right?
Linda?
No. Where we're going to put this, I don't know. But this is the flag of Zamosz. For... So if we didn't have all this, think of how much more jewelry I could have bought over there in the suitcases. Then, let's see. This is the book that the President gave to Sister Cities and therefore I'm giving it to the town because Sister Cities is a town organization. And that's all my goodies.
Stay here and let's invite the Consul and Elizabeth up here. They gave us lots of gifts, as you can see.
This is a watercolor of town hall in Zamosz, built in 15th century as a gift to Fountain Hills.
We're gonna find a place to put this down here so everyone can see it when they, when they come in. We'll put it somewhere in our lobby.
And this is a pen from Zamosz, from President of Zamosz.
This is a pen I used to sign. And he gave us the pen, put a nice little plaque on that for us. So we'll also put these in the... Okay, and now, Nick.
And the Consul, Honorable Consul of Poland, I present Polish flag to Mayor Linda Kavanaugh.
Now, there's one more thing that I think we need to point out. Any of you that come in on Fountain Hills Boulevard off of Shea, you know it's a sign that holds all of our sister cities' names. There is a new sign for Zamoś and I have to say this, this was paid for by Elizabeth.
Okay, we'd also like to get a picture with the delegation, all the people that came. Please come up and take a picture with us.
John.
John.
Stell.
Two of the people did not be here, a jazz crew, so.
Now I wouldn't give that up either for a picture.
Okay, I have a request to speak, Enrique Melendez.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Yates, council members and staff, and my good friend, Beb Bender. I'm here tonight as the consul of El Salvador to honor my fellow colleague, Consul of Poland, Bogemil Horchum. But before I begin, Mayor and consul, I want to extend the sincerest congratulations from our Foreign Minister, our government, on your election as mayor and also to Council Member Legé for your reelection victory. We wish you the very best in health and success in continuing to lead the council in making the community the very best in Arizona.
Thank you.
You know, eight years ago, brought me a lot of memories, I presented my home country's flag to then-Mayor Waldy Nichols and I was very proud to see my colleague doing the same to you, Mayor. The Sister City programs that I have under my jurisdiction, one is in Prescott, Arizona, the other one here in Fountain Hills. Shortly after consul Horchum was accredited and appointed Consul of Poland, he had a reception at his house and I remember you being there, Mayor, with the next senator for the state of Arizona, the Honorable John Kavanaugh in the audience. And the day afterwards, Consul Horchum came to me and he said, "Consul, you have two sister cities, please help me develop a sister city in Poland." So we started to work and it took us a year to get through all the paperwork and with the help of Sharon Morgan and others, you have made it happen tonight. The Sister City program that I have under my jurisdiction, we're very proud of, in Prescott, we have given an ambulance, built a children's park, given numerous donations and in Fountain Hills, we recently sent 44 high school kids to build 20 houses out of the jungle for the people that needed it the most. So I want to thank particularly a gentleman in the audience, his name is Jerry Miles and El Salvador holds him very close to their heart. This man has been in El Salvador six times, was given the honor of being the official photographer for the country and most of his paintings are hanging in our embassies throughout the world. So once again, Mayor and consul, I just want to pay my respects to my fellow colleague, Consul of Poland, for his work. We're gonna work together to build that relationship and please remember to come to El Salvador. It's a great country and we want you there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm almost ready to get on to our regular business. I just want to extend one more thank you to Elizabeth Horchum for graciously bringing us Polish pastries. They were delicious. And Shawna, thank you for the coffee. Perfect. All right, now we'll go on to our regular business. If anyone would like to leave at this time, since you came for the ceremony, I'll give you a moment to move out of the room and thank you all for coming. We really appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay, go on to our consent agenda unless, do we have any other speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll go on to our consent agenda. We have seven items, remember the two, seven and nine were taken off, so it leaves us with seven items and I get a motion to accept these seven as written.
Mayor, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Legé?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you. Regular agenda items, number seven, we'll start with that one, consideration of approving our cooperative purchasing agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and Hoffman Southwest Corporation, DBA professional pipe services not to exceed $50,000 for storm drain, structure cleaning and televising.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, against cooperative purchasing agreement, contract number 2015-126 between Fountain Hills and Professional Pipe Services not to exceed $50,000 for storm drain cleaning under a cooperative purchasing contract that allows the town of Fountain Hills to use from the city of Cottonwood. It will entail 407 catch basins that we have and 73,000 linear feet of storm drains and culverts that we have in the community, as well as videotaping what we have in the drainage systems to determine if we have any future repairs that we need to do to those, that drainage system. It's a staff recommendation to approve the contract 2015-126 between the town Fountain Hills and Professional Pipe Services and Mr. Raymond Reese, Environmental Services Coordinator, and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the contract.
Hey, Raymond, questions for Raymond?
Mayor, thank you. Thanks for bringing it off the consent. When we make some purchases, I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about that. So you're anticipating then that something that has been $10,000 a year should now be $50,000 and would you just expand on that a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Dickey, the pipes that we have under a lot of our major roads are pretty large pipes and we have one contract right now that we would like to enter into to have those pipes cleaned out, it's up in Sunridge Canyon, is about $24,000 to do. So we need to increase the amount of the, what we're spending on that to be able to cover. This money that we have right now is going to cover everything, but it will allow us to at least start doing some of the work that we need to do.
Mayor Raymond, you're recommending that this amount is in future budgets as well? So, so next year and on and on because we anticipate having these needs in different parts of town, is that?
Absolutely, yes. Upon the inspections that we have been doing, we have noted there are a lot of areas that we have not been able to do because it is so expensive to get in there and do that, that we are recommending that we keep this in the budget as a line item.
Thank you. One more thing and I'll ask this on the next item too, would this particular expense be eligible for, maybe this is for Andrew, for stormwater utility fee budgets? Back to you.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
We actually did have this in the plans if we were to go forward with this stormwater utility fee. This item would have been in there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions? Okay. Who wants to go first? Go ahead.
Raymond, what's, if you know, what's the previous year's budgets, let's just say the past five years for this particular item? And has it been $10,000 every year for a period of time?
I do not think it's been the full $10,000 because the cost of doing all the projects individually are very expensive. We can clean out some catch basins, we can remove some debris in front of culverts, things like that, but to really get in and do the big, major projects, it's gonna take a good amount of money to get through that.
Is this something that monies haven't been allocated to in the past and now we're spending more money to unclog these multiple clogged drains?
Yes.
Okay, whose responsibility does this fall under as far as making sure this happens year after year?
Well, that, I believe that would be the street department and myself.
Okay. When was the last time they were cleaned?
The ones we're doing now, never. They have not been cleaned and they're, they're pretty full. The ones up on Sunridge Canyon are about three quarters full in the pipes.
I guess I'm just, what I'm trying to get at here is we spent $10,000 or maybe even less than that in years past, now we're being asked to spend $50,000 on this for this fiscal year as well as any foreseeable years. I'm just trying to get my arms wrapped around where, where have those monies been spent or why haven't they been spent in the past and are we spending more now than, you know, we need to because we didn't do it in the past?
Well, truly, this came to light, Sunridge Canyon sent us notification that the drain pipes were, were clogging there. They thought it was their responsibility, they thought it was their pipes, but in reality it was ours and there was some overtopping in the area and some danger of flooding, so they were gonna have it cleaned out, but we realize it's, it's really our, it's our responsibility, it's our infrastructure.
And we're contracting out for this, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hanson?
This was just kind of a curiosity question. I know the sanitary district takes really pretty pictures of the sewer lines, so I mean they have that capacity and I just wondered if the thought was ever given to, you know, because we have a lot of cooperative efforts with them, that possibly that equipment could take pretty pictures of our pipes too.
Yep, yes, they do, we do have an agreement with them to do certain activities in that, in that area, but first you gotta get the pipes cleaned out before you can go in with the cameras, since we have to assess what is going on in there, if we need to do repairs, things like that. So we will more than likely ask for assistance from the sanitary district.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, let's see, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Of the 13.82 miles of pipe we have buried in Fountain Hills, how much of it will be three quarters full as Sunridge Canyon?
I can't really say that. We try to inspect them annually as part of our stormwater management plan, but we're pretty small staff, so we don't get to every storm drain, so probably quite a bit.
Mayor, if I may, so if none of our drainage pipes have been cleaned out since the onset of Fountain Hills, Sunridge Canyon is approximately 20 years old probably, so would you, is there a possibility that the big portion of the clog is from new construction and runoff over the past, say the original five or six years before everybody got their yards under control and the, and the erosion stopped? Is there a possibility this won't happen again for another maybe 50 years opposed to 20?
It's a possibility. The, most of the material that's in the pipes at Sunridge Canyon are silt and that's just a runoff from the, the area around there, so it, it probably is from construction and it's possible that it will take a long time for that ever to get to that state again.
Thank you, Raymond.
All right, Councilman Yates?
Thank you. Raymond, so is this a one-time and then I realize not to exceed, my only fear about doing that as a contract is next year, whether we need it or not, they may go up to that point and not, not exceed it, so to everyone's point, if it's a one-time clean, $50,000 this year, then the maintenance moving forward, could we get that down or no matter what, its time and materials, $50,000?
I really, I can't answer that until we get out there and see really what the condition of all the infrastructure is and not the, not the full 73,000 linear feet is actually culvert, but a lot of that is concrete drainage or just drainage structures, just ditches and those need to be maintained as well, so it, it really is, and those are maintained by another fund that we have, but the actual piping and the culverts and the catch basins, that's what this monies goes for.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I'm wondering, and consul, if, if we should maybe just do a one-year contract and then reassess, because as you're bringing up, this is years of collection and debris and then once it's cleaned out after the first time, then we can probably get a little bit better assessment of what kind of contract moving forward or is it an all or nothing contract that's in front of us?
Well, the contract is for one year.
Okay.
And then it's a renewable, so if the town chooses not to renew the contract, then the town manager just does not sign that contract for the next year.
I'm still, Madam Mayor, still just a little concerned because it's already in there that the cap is $50,000 a year as opposed to, let's clean it out and then maybe go out for bid, whether it's this contractor whomever, it, it might be considerably less now that it's cleaned out and now that we've got a maintenance program, but I mean if, if, you know, anyone else?
If you want to review it, excuse me, Mayor, council, if you want to review it annually, we can, we'll bring them back annually.
Madam Mayor, I personally, I'd feel better about doing something like that, that way we can kind of reassess, because that is a considerable jump from a few thousand dollars a year to $50,000 and now we've got it set to reoccur, so thank you.
Well, I think, are you, are you saying that we can renew it, they're giving us the option to renew it, but we don't have to? That's what you're saying?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the contract is built as a cooperative purchasing agreement on the underlying agreement, so as long as the underlying agreement is in place, you can purchase from it, but our contract on top of that says it's subject to annual appropriation, so the council first has to appropriate the money and then it's subject to the town to say it's in its best interest and then subject to whatever amount they do each year. The cap on this is a not to exceed ever kind of cap, but that doesn't mean all of our contracts are built as we'll do as much as, as the town directs you to do, but not anymore. So next year, if you decide you're not gonna appropriate for this purpose or for this amount, then Ken will have to re-up at whatever amount you do appropriate or not at all.
Okay, does anyone else have questions? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. How many feet and, how many feet of drainage pipe or drainage easements will we get cleaned out for $50,000?
I believe we're doing three of the pipes and they're at 100 feet.
A total of 100 feet?
No, three each at 100 feet, so 300 feet total and that's, I believe, for the 24,000.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Raymond, in addition to this assessment, will you have an opportunity or will staff have an opportunity to assess our townwide needs prior to budgeting for the next fiscal year? Because it seems like you've presented an issue that hasn't been before us before and we're talking 10,000, 50,000 and we're talking about a culvert in a particular area of town. I would imagine there are needs throughout the town and I'm just curious in terms of, is there a process in place to get our arms wrapped around what our needs are townwide and if so, what's that timeline?
We've already started the process, we've done. We've already started the process. We've done inspections this spring. We also have funds appropriated to have a storm drain inspection happen this, this fiscal year. So, we will have an idea of where we are.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Yates.
I move to approve contract number 215-126 between the town of Fountain Hills and professional pipe services for the amount not to exceed $50,000 for storm drain structure cleaning and televising with the caveat that after year one, we come back with some sort of assessment.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay. Thank you, Raymond.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number nine, consideration of resolution 2014-38 approving an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Flood Control District relating to the construction of the Ashbrook-Wash improvements.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, Maricopa County Flood Control District and the town of Fountain Hills executed an IGA for the design of the Capitol project back in, in December 2013. The project's currently is about 90, 90% complete in design. The IGA was approved by the Maricopa County Flood Control District Advisory Board on August 27th of, of this year, with the agreement being agendized by, for the board of supervisors after consideration and hopefully approval by the town council. The project consists of a new six-barrel 10-foot wide by, 5-foot high by 52-feet-long concrete culverts at Bayfield Drive and Ashbrook Wash to replace undersized existing pipe culverts. Also includes the new six, six-barrel 10-foot wide by 6-foot high by 102-foot-long concrete culverts at Sora Boulevard at Ashbrook Wash to replace undersized pipe culverts. New culvert wing, wing walls and steel handrails and riprap scouring protection, and on Sora, concrete outlet apron will be installed. Removal of the palm trees in Ashbrook Wash between Sora Boulevard and Del Cambrey is also part of the project. Utility locations are still being hashed through, mostly because of prior rights issues. But, the project is, is, it's been budgeted for $1,009,000. The town's portion of about $950,000. Of that, currently, we have 920 budgeted for that, 920,000 in the CIP, and the funding gap could come from the CIP contingency fund if, if necessary. The town engineer's here tonight, Randy Harrell, to answer any questions, any further questions that you may have. It is a staff recommendation to approve the IGA with the Flood Control District, Maricopa County.
Randy, did you want to add anything? We just want to wait for questions.
The only thing I would add is that Scott Vogel, the project manager from the Flood Control District, is in the audience tonight.
Great, okay. Questions? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor, and again, thanks for taking it off the consent, because again, when it's something that has some dollars attached, I'd like to have a little more explanation. The, obviously, the 920,000 was already budgeted and discussed, but I will ask again, would that in total be covered, able to be covered by an environmental or stormwater utility fee?
Mayor, Councilwoman Dickey, that's correct. It would be.
And then, Mayor, if the $30,000 that looks like we're going to have to take out of our capital funding, then obviously, since it's for the same project, we could probably use that. I know that we, at our retreat, did ask for this to be an item that would be brought back to us so that we could take a look at the possibility of an environmental fee, mostly since, I don't know how many years ago, when, when all of this came about as a mandate, 2010, maybe?
2009.
Yeah, 2009. So, again, I, I want to, I wanted to check for sure if these items would have been something that we could have paid for out of this fund if we had started, or if we do it proactively. And when can we expect to see that item on the agenda so that maybe we can discuss this further?
Mayor, council, members of the council, let me answer that. We have a packet that we want to put on the, one of the two meetings in October. We're still determining which, which one will be the fit for that, but it'll be in October.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know.
As, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but as you, as you alluded to earlier, the, the council discussed it at a retreat in January and asked to be brought back for consideration.
Yes, and Mayor, and I believe this is, you know, one of the things that we talk about as we are drawing on ways to try to get ourselves a little bit more revenue coming in so that we can handle things like this, and obviously, these are large amounts. And if you went back and looked at our budgets over the last three or four or five years, there seems to be some spending here that we've had to come up with, and in the future, there will be again. So, I'm glad that we're going to get a chance to talk about it. I think it's a very viable way because it's absolutely related to what we would be using it for. So, I appreciate that. It's going to be coming up soon.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, Ken, could you give us a feel for how many more projects we have like this in front of us for the town that are of this magnitude?
As far as the list of CIP projects, right off the top of my head, I can only think, well, with the Shea Boulevard, Sora Boulevard, obviously, they're, they're in the mix. We still have a Shea project, don't we, with Maricopa Association of Governments, that's, that's hanging out there over the next decade, that's with that one. I don't know of any other ones that are of that size, off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? And just, oh, sure.
Randy, this is probably more of a historical thing. Under the risk analysis, it says not moving forward with this project would leave 13 houses condo units subject to currently unmapped flood inundation, inundation in the 100-year storm. So, I was just wondering what the unmapped flood inundation meant, and how you go from unmapped to mapped, and what that process is.
Mayor, Councilwoman Hanson, we mapped our floodplains back in 1996 in conjunction with the Flood Control District. Since that time, there's been a number of upstream development as well as improvements to the Golden Eagle Park, emergency improvements to the Golden Eagle Park Dam. So, we would now have a greater flow in Ashbrook Wash when it is mapped again. The Flood Control District did a study back in 2011 and showed that these 13 residences were at risk of flooding in the 100-year storm. So, we, we currently have a, a project scheduled with the Flood Control District to remap this wash. I believe we're in about 2017 is when that's scheduled to occur. If this project's in place, they will never, these residents will never show up in, in being in the floodplain, so.
So, they were probably built before it was identified that they were where they were going?
Mayor, Councilwoman Hanson, yes. They were, they were built before we were aware that there was a flood risk at, at the elevation that they're built at.
Thank you.
Okay, and just so there's no misunderstanding with the public, when we have a retreat, there is no vote taken. Kind of sounded like there was. There is no vote taken. There's just a lot of discussion on items, and when it appears that the, some or the majority of the council want to bring something forward, then it's brought up as an agendized item. That doesn't mean that it's unanimous, nor does it mean that there was any vote already taken. So, just want to make that clear.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, another project for, that Councilman Brown brought up, Fire Station 2 relocation is still, still out there, too. I want to bring that back before the end of the year.
All right. Any further questions for Randy? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Yes? Thank you.
Move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Flood Control District of Maricopa County for the utility relocations, construction, construction management, and operation and maintenance of the Ashbrook Wash improvement, Bayfield Drive to Del Cambrey Avenue.
Mayor, second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Number 10, his discussion with possible direction to staff regarding law enforcement updates in Fountain Hills, goals and priorities for the department, and communication between the Fountain Hills, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and town officials. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of council members Dickey Elke and Hanson. There is no staff report, so I'll go to any council members who wish to discuss this. All right. Councilman Elke?
One of the reasons that I asked to have this item placed on the agenda is, there's been, unfortunately, a, a number of, not necessarily an increase, we don't have any numbers, but there's been a number of incidents that have occurred in town that have required law enforcement, certainly appreciative of law enforcement responding. And a number of those incidents the council learned about through the press or through Facebook, or I, I learned about them through Facebook or the newspaper or the, the Times 4:30 News. And I wanted to communicate, knowing that we were going to have a new captain in town, and I wanted to have some communication with that new captain regarding the level of communication that we've had in the past with Captain Rodriguez. I know we're in a transition period, but wanted to have some further communication about items that are coming to the council or to the town manager and then to the council. So, though, we're informed, and we don't learn about things through the newspaper or Facebook, as I do understand that there have been a number of incidents and activities in town involving sheriff's office, DEA, and other things of concern as well, considering, I understand that there was a report out there. Again, haven't heard anything directly from MHSO regarding a concern about some, someone in town, child abductions or attempted child abductions. I don't know that there's actually any merit to that, but again, that's some things that we're hearing out and about, and wanted to have better communications on that. And I know we have Captain Laterno, and we've got an item coming up here next on the agenda, and I don't know if it's more appropriate for Chief Rodriguez or Captain Laterno to answer any questions. I guess I should ask Chief Rodriguez about that. And if you want to send the captain up, whatever you want to do. Chief?
If you don't mind, all of us, a bit for historical.
And, and I do recognize that there, when there are ongoing investigations with respect to law enforcement, that, you know, discretion and, and not interfering with an investigation, I understand information not being disclosed to the council, and I completely get that. It's just some of the items that we've seen in the press before we've heard about them, you know. Learning about you leaving, you know, for example, was one of those items. And so, I just wanted to have some dialogue about it. This isn't intended for anything other than just to have some dialogue. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely. Mayor Kavanaugh, council members, Councilmember Elke, yes, and first of all, thank you for having me back up here, and it's always nice to be back in Fountain Hills. The, the transition period that we had, I'll give you a little bit of a timeline here, is, things have moved rather quickly in the sheriff's office over the past six weeks. I actually was officially notified of my promotion upon landing in, back in Phoenix from a vacation, and knowing that the promotion was in a little more than 24 hours, but about a 48-hour window. So, it, things happened really quickly, I think, and I do apologize that some of that communication was lost to you guys. We got caught up in our own world down there, and it was, it was dropped from our end of it. And I know Chief, Chief Deputy Sheridan also passed it on that we, we did make a mistake there in the notification process of that. As far as the other issues, the law enforcement issues in town, and the, the notification system that we have in place, the general procedures that we have is, is if an incident occurs that is going to rise to the level that the media may be involved, or that we think it may generate interest amongst citizens to you, they usually call you first and then ask what happened in their neighborhood, we will try to notify the town manager as soon as we feel that it's appropriate, based on some of the things you, you mentioned earlier. And I, I think it obviously can always get better. That's a, communications issues are throughout our lives. I've talked to Captain Laterno about those things and what the expectations are, and getting better and improving even on those that I had with Ken. You know, there's, sometimes in our business and in law enforcement, what doesn't really get on our radar because we do it all the time and it's very repetitive, we kind of maybe not give it the attention that it deserves, and therefore, we don't think it's as important. Yet, it is to a certain citizen or certain members of the community. So, the one thing we are struggling with sometimes is, is, and I've told Captain Laterno, I've told the deputies when I was out here, if you have police cars and fire trucks in a neighborhood, regardless of what that call is, you need to let us know so we can pass it on to the town manager, and then he can notify you as he sees fit. So, those are some of the things that we're continuing to work on. We always, obviously have to improve that to you guys, and I hope that kind of helps you where we're, we're at and where we want to be with it. And, and I will say this, the social media does hurt us in all aspects across the county. Facebook is so instant, you know, all the, the Twitter and, and things like that across the media. We cannot control that, and we don't have the ability to grab that information, our public information of officers here to, you know, probably testify to that fact, is people see it, they record it, and it's on YouTube, it's on social media before we can even, before we've even investigated what it is, and we're not ready to release that information. The, the report of the abduction and, and things like that, it's spread very quickly through social media. And, and us getting that information and verifying it before we send out a panic to the citizens and the community, that's what we have to do, is verify it. And that, that was just one of those trains that got away from us before we could get on board. And the changes in technology, the changes in the social media, we just need to prepare for that and do a better job trying to stay ahead of that as well.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, thanks for coming. So, this is the social media, but it's also what's going on in the world, in the country, and things like that. And so, when we do see some of these reactions, they're exacerbated by talk, which is natural. So, for example, when Captain Kleinheids, when, when I first pretty much got on council, we talked a lot about community policing, which is something that's in our, seems to be something mutually agreed upon for us to, to try and do here. But, some of the items that have been happening, and for some reason, it seems to be recent, seem to involve bigger vehicles or, and I wouldn't say they were necessarily SWAT reactions, but they look like them, like the, the woman, and there was, I think, a thing with animals, and then there was something with another neighborhood where it appeared there was more of that kind of a reaction with big vehicles and, and that kind of thing, which is alarming, especially with some of the talk going on about the militarization of the police force and things like that. So, part of the reason that I was glad that we could talk like this was to reiterate some of the things that we had, and they actually do exist still in our agreement about community policing and about what that actually means. I think Councilwoman Hanson is, is pretty familiar with it, and you know that I was working with the weed and seed program for a while, and, and some of those ways of interacting where you're part of the community rather than us versus them sort of thing, just, just keeps the community safer overall, and it's, and, and the evidence is, is definite. I mean, it's not just something to be guessed at, and others, there are statistics and studies and things like that. So, this discussion gives us the opportunity to kind of bring that up again. There's a, there was an author who was interviewed, and he was talking about, he used to be in the Seattle Police Chief, I think, and he was talking about the, in the 80s, and I think they were talking about LA, there were 3,000 SWAT reactions to different, you know, levels of things, drugs and whatever, a year, and it's now 50,000. And part of what he said that they do that is because some of the equipment that people are getting from either the military or however, they have to use it or lose it, kind of a, of a feeling, so they have an incentive maybe to react to situations. Kind of what, what he used as a good example was a, you know, suburban house with, you know, that had some drugs, like a kid with the drugs, and then to, to do the thing where you bang down the door and that kind of stuff. So, for people like me who aren't in that and don't see that all the time, it can be alarming, and you're right, Facebook and things like that really... and you're right, Facebook and things like that really exacerbate it, and I don't know, you know, you can't tell who's overreacting and who isn't. So I guess I'd like to know that your commitment is still there with the community policing and all that that means, especially in a community like here. We're so fortunate, we don't have the kind of neighborhoods like the weed and seed neighborhoods had where so much was going on. So I think I wanted to ask you a little bit about that, and maybe our captain here, obviously Sheriff is always welcome to speak, but I just wanted to get your feeling about that, especially given what's going on in the rest of the country.
Sheriff, if you would like, or defer to my boss, Bruce.
Sometimes you forget, you forget there's a sheriff.
I remember.
He does.
Anyway, thank you. By the way, we've had our differences, but I want to thank you for your time and your efforts. My wife and I live in this town, so, and we think it's the greatest town in the universe since I've lived around the world, so thank you for your efforts. But to answer your, by the way, I don't know if you know it, crime has gone down. Are you familiar with that? It went way down in the last several, huh? Yes. It's gone way down. I think you ought to be proud of that. As far as, you know, I'm the elected official, sometimes politics enters into the situation, even though I'm the chief law enforcement officer for this county. It's very difficult to notify everybody when we're in the heat of battle, whether it's with a SWAT team, weapons, and so on. So we do deal with, I hope they deal with you, they don't even tell me sometimes what's going on. But we're going to try to improve the communications between all of you. You all have an interest in this town, and we'll try to do the best. Councilwoman Dicky, as far as the SWAT team, I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to use as much power as necessary to protect my deputies, whether it's here, I had a deputy killed in Anthem, another one killed, so I'm going to use every effort to protect my deputies, whether it's in Fountain Hills or anywhere else. That's number one. We're going to do everything to protect the public. If I need 50 SWAT teams, we're coming here to protect the public. I make those decisions. And I'm not going to get any of my deputies killed because someone doesn't like a SWAT team. As far as the, what you're leading towards is the law enforcement becoming more involved, somewhat like military. Well, when I took office, other than all the tents I was able to obtain, Korean War tents, and by the way, the tent city is still there after 21 years. Plus, we did get some automatic weapons from the military to arm my deputies. At that time, we didn't have any money. We did get a 50-caliber machine gun, which wasn't from the military, I paid for that years ago, so we do use some military equipment. But the point is that we're going to do everything we can to defend our office and protect the people of this county, regardless of what the equipment is. Now, we're going to get another helicopter, very expensive helicopter. We're going to have two 407s. Those helicopters, I don't think we charge you extra for. There's many things that we use we don't charge you for, including SWAT teams and K9s and everything else. People think that I ride this helicopter to my house. I have never been in a helicopter since I've been the sheriff. So we're going to get, for your benefit, a new helicopter, we're getting a new airplane. So we're getting quite a bit of new equipment, and it's not military equipment. So I don't know, Councilwoman, if I, oh, as far as community policing, do it every day. We're always out there. I average one or two speeches a day around this county, been doing it for 22 years. I believe in community policing. I believe, as you do as elected officials, we got to get to the people that we serve because we're their boss. So you're right, everything we can do to improve the community policing, we're going to continue to do. So I hope you have a deep interest in this town, I hope you stick around when you leave. I don't know if you are, I hear the rumor you're moving somewhere, but this is the greatest town, and I hope you stay, and you laugh, and I don't know why, that could be just a rumor.
It's not, we're that girl.
Well, you know, it came from Facebook.
Moving.
By the way, I have a Twitter, if you want to know what's going on, it's the real Sheriff Joe, and the Facebook, I think I have over a half a million followers, so if you ever want to know what's going on in the sheriff's office, check my Twitter. Plus, we will start a new system of streaming television, live, so we can come here in the whole world, we'll see Fountain Hills, especially in front of the fountain, when we're doing any activity, we can do it live, so that's coming very soon, maybe a month or two. So I believe in open dialogue, I believe in not keeping anything secret, I believe that the people, and you should know what's going on, and I've always said that. I don't run a secret CIA operation, so they call me a publicity hound, but let them call me a publicity hound. I don't run a CIA operation, I let everybody know what we're doing. So it's a little ironic, we have a few concerns that we don't tell you what's going on, I tell the whole world what's going on. But sometimes you're right, Councilman, your attorney, you know we can't tell everybody everything when we're doing investigative reports. I've called the mayor, we had a serious thing here, but we don't have that many more serious, what was that about, you remember? It was, huh? But I let you know it was some important operation we had here, somebody killed themselves or something. But anyway, I want to thank all of you, and thank you for what you do for the, our town, since I live here. And once again, I want to thank you for your efforts, and thank you too, I hear you're leaving.
I'm not moving.
Are you moving too?
You're staying? Good.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming here today, and I think, I think maybe myself more than anyone else certainly understands when you talk about that you need to protect your deputies. You remember, I was married to a police officer, 20 years, and I remember when he first started out, he had a .38 and a bulletproof vest, and then it became a better and bigger bulletproof vest, and then a bigger gun, and then he left then, but now they've got even bigger guns and more protection. The reason is, the bad guys got bigger guns, and they've got their protection. So I knew that the police had to keep up with what they were, what they were going to face out there on the street, and even if, even if it's just something that doesn't even seem like it's going to be a really bad situation, like a domestic violence, my husband used to tell me, sometimes a domestic violence is worse than anything else, you go into a situation and you have no idea what's going to happen. So you go there with the attitude, of course, that you're going to, you know, you're going to try to defuse the situation, you're going to be calm about it, but you're also there to protect yourself, to protect your partner and the other deputies who are with you. So I do understand that, and I think the people of Fountain Hills understand that and they appreciate it. Social media is getting us on all different angles, whether it's people who suddenly have an issue with their water bill, or mosquitoes, or, you know, they, then all of a sudden I'll get a note, and it's already been on Facebook, and 50 people are talking about it. So sometimes people call me and they'll say, oh, I saw a sheriff's car near my neighbor's house, you know, what was going on? They expect me to know that, and I understand that as soon as you're able, you will let us know, but I do understand that you have to investigate, and it isn't always appropriate for you to let out details. So I do appreciate you coming here, and I do appreciate the fact, I met Captain Letourneau at Captain Rodriguez's promotion to chief, so, you know, I knew he was coming to Fountain Hills, and you wanted me to know why you picked him for Fountain Hills, because you wanted the best for our town, because you live here, and you knew that I was going to expect the best for this town. And Chief Sheridan also, who lives here, assured me that you were very, very careful in your selection, so I do appreciate that.
Well, you have to, Deputy Chief Rodriguez has to thank all of you for his promotion. I decided to promote him, but one of the reasons was that he got on great with this council, and you respected him, and to me, that's very important. It's tough to move somebody, but you can't hold it against him to move up the ladder if the opportunity is there, but you got a good guy replacing him. Nobody's indispensable in life, including me, but, so you helped him get promoted, you ought to be taking all of you out for lunch or somewhere, right? With all the money you make now. So, but I started out with bow and arrows when I was a cop in Washington and Las Vegas. Seriously, I know what your husband went through. We don't want to overkill, we understand that. We've been fortunate, especially in this town, we haven't had many incidents with our deputies at danger, that type of thing, so we've been rather lucky in that respect. But I understand about the community policing, and we'll try to keep doing that, and the rehabilitation that we have in the jails, we have great programs, and that's important for all of you, especially those that end up in the tents. They're not as bad as the media or I say they are, so we do have incarceration, and our, you know, I'm in charge of all the jails too. But anyway, I don't want to take up all your time, I hope I answered.
Unless there are any other questions?
Your question about tanks or whatever.
Councilwoman Hanson has a question.
It wasn't necessarily a question.
Okay.
It was more, I appreciate this dialogue, and I think, and I appreciate the fact that our crime rate has gone down. I think maybe it's because over the last few months, there were some crimes that were what we weren't used to, you know, the attack on the deputy, and then the subsequent shooting, and, you know, someone being found in a truck, and, you know, things that we're not used to. So when they come up, it's like, whoa, what's happening in Fountain Hills? And then I think that another good thing about this is the fact that we can kind of reiterate and rehash over the challenges that we both face. You know, for us to be able to say, you know, yes, because of social media and because we hear this from our citizens, you know, looking for suggestions on how we can, you know, help you actually, by maybe helping to diffuse something that's going maybe wild, you know, email, and we can say, you know, it's under control, or just that, and I think that's where some of the communication comes in, by, you know, preparing us to help you. And so I think the sharing back and forth, us realizing, you know, your challenges and you realizing our challenges is a beneficial thing.
Well, you go way back, Councilwoman.
I know, I'm old.
I say way back to 1992.
1920?
19, I bring that up, because there's some, there's one case that has never been solved in this town, and I said I'm never leaving this office until we solve that case. I haven't given up on that, believe me. It's a tough one, I need some lucky breaks, but I'm not going to give up. Unfortunately, we had the Temple murder, remember nine, the same day? So maybe they should have been here too. I'm not going to second guess the former sheriff, but I'm still concerned about that case, we're still working it, and I'm not going to rest until we find the killer or killers of that person. In fact, I think that's the only murder we've had in Fountain Hills, it hasn't been solved. In fact, we don't have any, many murders. So that's one thing I promise you, that we're, it's just the right thing to do, is try to find the killer of that lady. So anyway, thank you, good luck on your, whatever, and good luck on, I know you're probably going to do law work or something. We had a case together, I'm not going to talk about it, there he is, but it's strange how the world is, how years later you come together on, isn't it? Small world. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right.
Mayor, members of the council, again, we're going to try to do the best we can in getting you the information as fast as we can. The last time I talked to Deputy Chief Rodriguez was 3 o'clock in the morning on that officer-involved shooting. So yeah, I mean, we try to do that as soon as possible with it. Try to get, shoot you an email as soon as I can, when I get that. All right, all right, I'll send it to you.
I appreciate you waking me up at 3 o'clock in the morning.
Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Brown.
You know, before we get off to the subject, I'd like to congratulate Chief Rodriguez on his promotion. I have no idea what the inner workings of the sheriff's department looks like, but from the outside looking in, it was very well deserved. I truly appreciate your service in Fountain Hills, I enjoyed working every day with you, and I wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you. Chief, or Deputy Chief, excuse me. Do you remember sitting there four years ago? Before you were sitting there where Captain Letourneau was, and I think to your right was Captain Kleinheitz, was sitting right next to you, and it just so happened to be the same night that I think we were talking trash, weren't we? And I think it was packed in here, and I think you stole me lunch for that, don't you? For those that were here, and it's probably quite a few in the room, I remember sitting there, it was the night that you were announced, you were replacing Captain Kleinheitz, and I think we were about an hour into a, was it seven-hour meeting that night on trash?
We didn't get there.
Two, two in the morning, something like that, Ed Gately was there, and I think it was about an hour in, and I saw you and Captain Kleinheitz just sitting there, and it was probably not a good first night, you're like, is this what it's going to be like every meeting? But I, you know, I said, why don't you guys get out of here? So where's that lunch going to be now that you have Deputy Chief's salary? Two lunches, all right. Well, congratulations to you.
Councilman Leger.
Mayor, if I may, Captain Rodriguez, it's, and Sheriff Joe mentioned this, it was just an absolute pleasure working with you. I mean, you did a tremendous job, I mean, just an awesome relationship with council, I felt very, very, very confident when you were here with us, and I know that that tradition will be passed on. When I came in this evening and we had a conversation about this, I hardly recognized you with that incredible suit that you have on there, so I'm not sure if you'll be seeing any lunches for a while, but good luck to you, thank you.
Councilwoman Dicky?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, just because we talked a lot about Facebook, but the people that are commenting on Facebook are Fountain Hills residents, so I want to make sure that we give it the respect, just as if we were getting an email or anything else like that. There is some concern about certain items, some of the things that we were talking about, and in addition to when one commander leaves and another one comes, which was something that was in our contract, which is something maybe to be looked at, our contract does give us some opportunities for amendments, but even if you don't go that far, our budget document actually has priorities for the year. So while we may not make big changes, we do have the opportunity to look to a year ahead and say, these are the priorities, that's the point of the, at least quarterly meetings that the town manager will have with the commander, and that will kind of talk about some of the things that maybe come up that we can't even think of right now, but that would become a focus for, say, 14, 15, which, I don't know that we actually talked about it very much when we did the budget this year, but over the years, and you'll see it in there, there's four or five bullet items to look at for the coming year which are set as priorities. So that does give us an opportunity for some input, which I think is good, so even after this evening, and there's no formal, I don't think, unless Councilman Elke or Councilwoman Hanson had any sort of a motion on idea, but I think at least the gist of what we were talking about is coming through on this, so I appreciate it.
And I did have a conversation with Captain Letourneau, asking him if he was going to continue the quarterly reports that you have at, in the community center, which is open to the public, where they find out about crime and they can ask any questions they want of you, and also the press comes, so anyone who can't make of you, and also the press comes, so anyone who can't make the meetings also gets that through the newspaper. I was at the league conference a week before, so I wasn't able to make the first coalition meeting, but I was told that the captain did come to that meeting, and that's very important to have MCSO presence there. And I also discussed with him community policing, and I was glad to see in his background that he was with enforcement support, and he worked with volunteer groups also, Posse, Animal Cruelty Unit, lots of projects. And even though when I saw his resume, I knew there was a lot more, so I asked, and his resume is actually quite extensive, just like any cop. He didn't put everything down, but that's okay. So, I was really happy to see that, and I know the coalition people are very grateful for MCSO presence, not only Jill, the resource officer, but to have, to have you there. With that, I, there's no more comments, so entertain a motion.
Just from what you just said. And I don't think we have a motion necessarily on this item, but maybe on the next one. But two things you mentioned made me think of something. One was the quarterly report. So, that is one of the four objectives for 14, 15 in our budget, include, and also the coalition. So, that's really good to see that there. And then you mentioned the league, which, you know, I was also there to, one of the sessions was by Sheila Polk, who's the Yavapai County Attorney, and she's doing a, I think she's been doing it for a couple of years through AS Post, an ethics, sort of a leadership training. She did it with Doug Bartosz, I believe, who's the, in the city of Cottonwood, and he's a former law enforcement. And I wonder, and I wondered, does MCSO get their training from AS Post too? Is that the same? Okay. So, that might be something that you've actually already done, but it was really an amazing session to go to. So, I was glad that you mentioned that. Thanks.
Anything else?
Okay. We don't need a motion. Sometimes we cut and paste on this, and it seems like we do, but we don't. It is just for discussion. So, I will go on to number 11, consideration of the town manager's recommendation of Captain David Letourneau to serve as District 7 commander at the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office as outlined in Resolution 2012-19, Section IIE, the intergovernmental agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, the town of Fountain Hills has an IGA with the MCSO for law enforcement services that spells out many of the responsibilities of both parties. There's a procedure in place for the replacement of the commander for District 7. As you know, Captain Rodriguez was promoted, as we just, as we just discussed, and in turn sent, sent me per the IGA, the three candidates, all of which are captains and were excellent candidates for consideration. In the interview process that was enacted with the subsequent recommendation of Captain Letourneau for the new commander, by my office anyways, for District 7, you have a letter of recommendation from Chief Deputy Sheridan as well for Captain Letourneau, and I'll be happy to answer any further questions. And if you have any answers or questions of any of the MCSO representatives here or myself, I'd be happy to answer any. Again, it's my recommendation to ratify our, our recommendation for approval for Captain Letourneau according to the IGA.
Bev, were there any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Questions for Ken? Councilwoman Dickey?
No, Mayor, I don't actually have a question, but given that, the way the actual contract is written, which is maybe something we will revisit, the actual motion I would like to make, it would change that just a little bit, which would be that I move to ratify the reassignment of MCSO Captain Joe Rodriguez and his promotion to Deputy Chief for Patrol Operations from his post as District 7 commander.
Second.
I can explain again, if you'd like, the reasoning being that the council in the contract is to approve the reassignment, and then the town manager is to make the appointment from the three suggestions. The town is not to necessarily, we do not have to vote on that. We, we're, so this ratifies the first part.
Andrew, you want to comment on that?
Mayor, members of the council, that's consistent with the agreement. As we've talked about before, there are two duties in that paragraph. One is to the town manager to select from the three. The other is from, for the town, it doesn't use town manager, to actually approve the transfer. It's my opinion that paragraph is actually meant to just be for the first two-year period, and then we would, after that point, not have that same process, but it's not really written that way. So, ratifying the council's prior, what should have happened prior to the actual three names coming forward is appropriate in this point.
Okay.
So, can I, can I put it in layman's terms maybe, a little bit more? As I understand it, not, not trying to restate, as I understand. So, the count, the way that the contract's written with the sheriff's office is that if a captain is going to leave before the two-year term is up, the town council has to agree to allow that captain to leave before that two-year term. Is that correct, Andrew? Or at least under the contract?
Mayor, Councilman Elke, that's the way I think it's meant to be written. The way it actually is, is written, the council has to approve a transfer period. It's not limited to the two-year period. So, we've always handled it as, regardless of when, the council generally signs off, but it's always been the town manager who actually makes the appointment from the selected three.
Okay. So, the council, once we have, receive a captain, or once we have a captain assigned by, you know, selected by the town manager, once there's a captain out here, then the town would have to agree to approve the reassignment, even though they work for MCSO, at least the way the contract's written?
Yeah. If I can go back to when we started with this provision in the contract, it was a longevity provision. And so, I believe the intent was to make sure that the captain or whomever was assigned as the commander over the area was here for at least two years.
I see.
But the language isn't as clear as it needs to be. So, I think when we come to renewal next time, we're going to make that very clear, that it's the two-year period, and after that point, then it's just three names are submitted for whoever's going to be.
So, you're saying if we vote no to this reassignment, then Captain or Deputy Chief Rodriguez has to...
He has to take the suit back.
Right. He has to take the suit back. Okay. Yeah, just...
So, so at the same time that we are promoting Captain Rodriguez, we're also accepting Captain Letourneau, or are you just, or Ken is just appointing?
It's Ken's appointment under the IGA.
Okay. Has everybody got that?
And I'm comfortable with Ken's interview. I'm comfortable with Chief, Deputy Chief Rodriguez's recommendation, and absolutely the sheriff. I mean, he's recommending Captain Letourneau. Certainly give all those recommendations a lot of weight, and we'd be very happy to have Captain Letourneau serve as our captain in town.
Do we give him a round two?
Wait, wait, wait. He's got to, he's got to come up first and sing for his supper.
Well, I have to say, it's the first time I ever heard a lawyer explaining a lawyer, and then we had to explain what the second lawyer said.
We do it all the time.
Yeah, you do it all the time. All right. Thank you to both of you for clarifying. All right. So, now we, we have a motion. Do you want to, and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Can you take the tags off?
You can keep your suit on.
Mayor, is it possible to have Captain Letourneau come up and introduce himself to the town?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'm sure that the captain would be willing to meet with anybody at any time, like he's done with me.
Where are you going, Joe?
Rodriguez? Thanks, Mayor. Council members. I would. I'd be happy to meet with anybody. Any questions? The sheriff did a very good job of describing, especially the community policing. We take it very serious. I take it very serious. We're dedicated to it. Any questions at all? I think Ken and I have done very well communicating, but it can always be better. I read all 96 posts on that Facebook account referenced the possible abduction, and I told myself I probably shouldn't do it, but I wanted to see what was being said. And we've all discussed, it is a, it's a vicious snowball at times. From where it starts to where it ends, it changes 50 times in between. But I read it because I want to make sure, I want to hear what the community is saying, what the questions are. The bad part is how bad the facts get diluted and turned around and twisted. It wasn't quite what it seems, but I know that is what the town folk are saying, and they need to be better informed. It's just sometimes we don't have the facts that we can put out there. And I'm not going to get on Facebook and answer questions because that, that's just as bad, but I certainly will read it. I'm very happy to be in the town. I do have an extensive background in community policing. I've run the Posse stuff for several years, volunteers, and a lot of community policing issues. So, I take it very serious. My guys in town will also take it very serious.
Anybody have anything else? No?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ken.
All right. That's it then?
Thanks.
Okay. Any other, anything else from Ken?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then, does anyone else have anything that they'd like to talk about at this time? Councilwoman Dickey?
Just got to brag on Henry and I, Mayor, at the league, the, you know, they always do those service award things. So, we both got our eight-year service award at the dinner. So, but he wasn't there, so I had to do it by myself.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and I was figuring the next meeting, we could talk about the league. So, if there's any particular seminars or anything you want to bring up, anything that was interesting, we'll, we'll do that at the next, the next meeting. It was great that you were there and Ken also. So, anything else? If not, motion to adjourn?
Mayor, so moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're done.